13 Cookville City Council Meeting to Order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Mayor Swallows.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Albright.
Here.
All present.
All right, would everyone please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. All right, consider approval of agenda as presented. Do we have any additions or subtractions?
No changes.
Motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Uh, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on January the 3rd, 2013. Motion for approval for the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item three, consider on second and final reading, ordinance 121222, amendments to the zoning code relative to assisted living residential care facilities as permitted uses in the PRD and CL districts, sponsors Mr. James Mills.
Mayor, council members, mayors, you stated this is second reading, and we've had no calls or comments since first reading. These amendments have been approved by the Planning Commission, recommended by the Planning Department.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments from the council?
Just have one. James, I think you probably mentioned this, but I think I forgot. Was it, is this just pertaining just to one, or is there two, two businesses that are wanting to take the opportunity of this zoning?
Well, we've discussed with one individual about potential. Whether that materializes, we don't know, but we do believe this will be appropriate in these zones.
Anything else? All right, I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
On to item four. Consider on second and final reading, ordinance 121223, amendments to the zoning code, section 205, parking requirements relative to modifying the minimum parking requirements for certain uses and inserting provisions for deferred parking, sponsors Mr. James Mills.
Mayor, as you stated, this is second and final reading. We've received no calls or comments since first reading, and again, this has been approved by the Planning Commission, as recommended by the Planning Department.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. We have a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments from the council?
No.
Seeing none, I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Item five, consider on second and final reading, ordinance 130101, amending Title 14, Chapter 5 of the Cookville Municipal Code pertaining to erosion and sediment control regulations, sponsor Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, this is the second and final reading of this ordinance. We've not received any calls concerning it. Again, it's the, getting our ordinances in line with the states, and we can provide coverage under the construction general permit. Anybody that's disturbing around the city, just have to come to the city to get a permit instead of having to go two places.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. We have a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Anything from the council?
Just glad he's providing the service. Should be beneficial.
Streamlines business, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
Anything else? I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. On to new business. Item six, consider appointments to the Cookville Municipal Planning Commission, sponsors Mr. James Mills.
Mayor, council members, the, the term of Dr. Roy Lutzenheiser for service on the Planning Commission has expired. The Planning Commission member served five-year terms. Dr. Lutzenheiser's been contacted and has agreed to continue to serve if reappointed. We would recommend for his reappointment. Additionally, the member, Aaron Bernhardt, has resigned from the Planning Commission. He has two years remaining on his current term, and Mrs. Kaye Starkweather's been contacted and has agreed to serve if appointed, and we would recommend, highly recommend for her appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do, can we do this on the same motion? Reappoint and appoint?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Any question, comments from the council?
We're always grateful when people agree to.
She's here too.
Yeah. So thank you for your willingness to be a part of this.
Can I ask something? Something?
It's actually two. You like it so much, you want us to. No, it's two, we checked, it's 15, January 15th.
I have a state, can I make a statement?
We had to hook her in somehow.
A reluctant volunteer.
Thank you. Kaye, 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 I'm sorry, I was, you and I had a long conversation about this, and I had heard one year also, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass the buck, okay? But.
No, I'm sure we, we said one, but we've gone back and double-checked, and it is two.
Vice Mayor Epps told me it was two, but he's, he was just gonna tell you one.
Well, I was gonna say, well, I do, I would, I still would like to say, thank, thanks to Kaye for doing this. Kaye, I've, it's been a pleasure for me to know you for a number of years, personally, okay? You may not like to, you may, it may be over by now.
For two more years now. For two, two more, two more.
One, one of the things that I, that we, that I appreciate about going through this process, looking at an appointment, is that, that your body of work that you've done as a, as a, as a citizen of Cookville on various boards and councils, and most recently with Architectural Review Board, has, your work has preceded you, so you've, you came very highly recommended, and it was very, it was a pleasure for me to be able to, to.
Mislead you.
To mislead you.
Well spoken.
Ms. Starkweather, not many people qualify for the two-year term like you do. We do appreciate you, you serving. Of course, at any time you're uncomfortable or would rather not serve, all you have to do is say so.
All right, anything else? I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item seven, consider reappointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals, sponsors Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, the term of Jane Flatt for service on the board has expired. Members of the Board of Zoning Appeals served three-year terms, as appointed by the council. Jane's agreed to continue to serve if reappointed, and we would recommend for her reappointment.
Are we sure about that term?
Yeah.
Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Hope we don't see Michael rushing. Mr. Shipley wanted us to get out of here before the snow hit. Item eight, considering, consider awarding contract for the environmental evaluation, design, and construction inspection for the paving of various city streets using Surface Transportation Program, STP funds, sponsors Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, we recently advertised qualifications from engineering firms to provide environmental evaluation, design, and construction inspection services. We received five proposals. We formed a committee to evaluate each, each proposal. The top firms that the committee selected was Reagan Smith. We then negotiated a fee with them, and the breakdown of the fee is shown there. It's broken down into environmental evaluation, design services, and the construction inspection. The total amount is $183,500. The STP funds will pay 80% of this, so the, the cost to the city for this will be $36,700. I'd request your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. We have a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments from the council?
We have to get this to get the grant, though.
Yeah. Just, just to mention, I mean, 58, 11 miles of paving that's gonna be done with this project, so that's, that's exciting. If you want to call it, it's roadwork, that's exciting, but that's.
Yeah, we've got about, right at $1.9 million in STP funds to use, so it's, it's quite a bit of paving.
And this would be performed in the fall of this coming year?
It should be, yes.
And just so everybody can understand, STP funds are funds from the state, correct?
The federal.
For federal?
Federal funds.
Okay. For road, road projects?
Yes.
Okay. All right, anything else? I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Item nine, considering, consider declaring a surplus miscellaneous vehicles and et cetera of various departments, sponsors Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, the departments have a number of service trucks and vehicles that are no longer in use and need to be declared surplus. You have memos, I believe, from every department director describing the vehicles they're declaring surplus. There's a number of just trucks and vehicles for various departments, I'm not gonna go through each one of those. I will point out that in sanitation, there are two rear-load sanitation trucks that would be declared surplus in this, and in addition to service trucks and sanitation trucks, the water department has various equipment, pumps and motors. They have one tractor in there as well, they're no longer using, that would be declared surplus. I believe all this is outlined in the various memos you have, but I'd recommend that they be declared surplus.
Mr. Davidson, a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? These all going to leisure services?
That's what I think this been, I can hear that in the background back here.
I think they rejected.
So they must be worn out.
Uh, anything else? All right, I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
We say that while Rick's in the back and can't defend himself. Item 10, consider awarding bids for transformers, breakers, and conductors, sponsors electric department, Mr. Tony Peak.
Mayor and council, we have solicited and open sealed bids on three different types of construction material. I'll address those collectively if it pleases the council. On the first one is for transformers, two different types, pole-mounted and pad-mounted, the 25s and the 150 pad-mounted. Recommend power supplies a low-evaluated bidder, meeting specification on both those items. Second bid notice is for three substation breakers. These are for our North Cookville substation, they're in excess of 20 years old now. They're electromechanical, and we'd like to replace those with newer vintage electronic breakers. And I'd recommend Yoder Sale as the, Yoder Sales as a low bidder meeting specifications on that item. And the last item is for 795 aluminum conductor, 100,000 feet. Recommend Wesco as the low bidder meeting specs for $123,500. Recommend your approval on all these bids.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. Have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Curious, just on the, on the bits of this last item, the, number of these were, like, Wesco had bid twice, is there, was there a difference between the?
They bid two different types of, types of transformers that they manufacture, Larry, and, and the difference in transformers usually is what they're wound with. One of those may be wound with copper, the other with aluminum, but they are bidding two different, separate units.
Anything else?
No.
Seeing none? I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. Item 11, consider approval of classification slash compensation study, sponsors Ms. Gail Fowler.
Mayor and council, as you're aware, during budget work sessions last year, there was considerable conversation and discussion about, was it time to conduct a classification compensation study and actually look at hiring an independent firm to, to do that for us? In October of last year, we developed a request for proposals that was advertised to Tennessee firms. We did limit the scope to the state of Tennessee. We opened those proposals October 31st, and we had proposals submitted by three firms, Burris Thompson and Associates of Nashville, Tennessee, the Center Group out of Memphis, and Tennessee Consulting out of Telahoma. We assigned a committee to review those proposals, and I want to thank the committee members for helping us with that. Councilman Alma Anderson was on that committee, Ronnie Kelly, Mike Davidson, Brenda Emel, and myself. There was a selection criteria developed, the process and method used in performing the work, references of municipal governments or other governmental entities, prior experience performing similar work, copies of proposed finished projects, which included samples of the questionnaires and job descriptions, estimated timeline to complete the project, the ability to meet the proposal criteria, and also the cost, very important. A timetable was submitted by the firm we're recommending this evening, and just to give you a brief overview of that, you'll notice the times will need to change and move out probably two to three weeks, but fact-finding consists of the initial meeting with city managers, department directors, council members, developing focus groups, developing job questionnaires that employees will be tasked with filling out, actually doing job analysis, reviewing the job questionnaires, and conducting employee interviews, reviewing the job descriptions to make sure there's a good match, compiling the market data. There'll be a job evaluation and classification review, developing and updating a pay structure, recommending pay adjustments is a, a part of that scope of work, developing the pay policy and implementation plan if we find areas that we need to improve upon, employee communication, which I think is a vital part of the project, and a final report. We had hoped to make this timeline work where we could have information back to you before you began budget work sessions for the upcoming fiscal year. $30,000 was budgeted to complete the project. The cost will be allocated per employee to each department. What we're recommending this evening is a not-to-exceed figure, but the approximate cost to the general fund is estimated to be right about $30,000. So, this evening, should council desire to authorize the city manager to approve a contract for the classification compensation study, it is recommended that Burris Thompson and Associates be awarded the contract for an amount not to exceed $47,744. I'm here to provide you this information, I'll be happy to try and answer any questions that you may have, and appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? From the council?
Have they submitted a proposed contract yet?
They have not.
I've got a few remarks. I have a few things to say about this, I wrote some notes, I wouldn't ramble along. Ever since being elected in 2010, the council has informally discussed the compensation benefit practices of the city. I was surprised to learn that it'd been over 20 years since the city had had an outside firm do a study about the salaries and benefits for all the city employees. I have even become more concerned about this matter from learning about the firemen and policemen leaving to go to other cities, state or federal agencies, because of low pay, because of Cookville's fire and police departments have such a reputation of incredible high standards, their employees can work anywhere they want. With the study being made, I feel the area where the city would be deficient is with the fire and police departments, but in order to be fair, all employees of the city should be included in this study. Knowing this, it will be our responsibility to carefully measure the benefits versus the costs to the city. We would need to respect the citizens of Cookville and realize we need to be careful. I'm in favor of approving this study, knowing the result will probably be an increase to the operating cost of the city. Even so, I think this is the right thing to do for the long-term benefit to the city by providing qualified and well-trained employees to serve and protect our city.
I served on the committee that reviewed the bids, I guess they were bids, yeah, and it was very interesting to me also that it had been over 20 years, it was in the 1980s that the last study was done for the city of Cookville, and I felt that it was time for us to look at it again, because you can't plan for the future unless you know what you need to provide for, and doing, having an outside firm come in that they do this all the time, this is their job, I felt like it was past time for us to review what all the employees of the city of Cookville get compensated for.
I attended a meeting on Tuesday over at Tech, it was a tech-ready conference that they had, and Regional Economic Development Institute, and while I was there, had the opportunity to share a few words with a mayor from another community, and he basically was asking, you know, how's everything in Cookville, what you got going on, and so we shared with him that we were going to be voting on this, this, this evening, and he said, well, we did that in our community, and after we did the study and implemented what we found out, our turnover was just slowed down immensely because we were able to keep good quality people. We have good quality people here in this city. We are so fortunate to have the quality of people that we have working here, and I think that it, we need to keep them. We train them, and once they get trained and they go someplace else because they're getting paid more, we need to do something so that we can keep our good employees, and it's just, I think it's just very important that we have, that we have this study done and see where we are, you know, it, we don't know until we do something like this to find out.
Thank you. Councilman Albright.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, during the budget session, we spent a lot, we spent a long time talking about this, and I think one of the things that came out of that is that really, most of the council members, we were pretty much on the same page for the majority of, for the majority of this, of this, of this issue, this issue, this program we're talking about, looking at pay grades and pay scales. I voted, I voted no for it in the budget session, and I didn't want to make sure I provided some clarity in that why I did. My, the reason why I voted no is because I felt like this could be done in-house. This could be done, instead of spending 40, almost $50,000 for an outside firm to do this, I felt like that our, that our administration, our very, very qualified employees that we have could do, could, could do this in-house and save us expensive, however, so I, so I, I want to explain that's, that's why I'm voting no, it's not because I don't think that we need to, to take a serious look at our pay grades and pay scales in order to keep and retain our good employees, especially, especially our, our safety employees. I'm certainly for that, but I felt like, I just feel like we should do that in-house, and I think it's probably because I just have a lot of confidence in this, in the work that I've seen our administrators do so, so far.
I, I have a lot of confidence in the work and the employees of the city of Cookville, but by adding this study to their regular job description, you know, they're, they're doing a great job at what they're, that they're already doing, and it's, if we were to ask this to be done in-house, then you are adding to the duties of these employees, and that takes on a whole new, a whole new venue and a whole new look. I mean, do you, you know, I feel like our employees are doing the job they're supposed to be doing and doing them quite well, and then if we ask them to do something in addition to this, to their regular jobs, then you have to think about how do you compensate them for that? And the other thing about this is, you know, you're talking about people's livelihoods, and when people work together day in and day out, you really want to make sure that whoever comes in and does this is impartial, if that.
Absolutely.
Makes, makes any sense. You don't want people to be looking over their shoulder and feeling uncomfortable by asking other employees to participate in something like this, other than with professionals.
You don't want to give the image of favoritism.
Right. I mean, I think that our employees are quite capable of doing that, but I just don't believe we need to add that to their job description and their duties.
It's funny, when we, when we all met, went over the budget for this proposed year, of course, we met, I don't know, three or four times at least, I guess more than that.
Yeah.
The budget, as big as it is, I guess the general budget, general fund budget, $20 million or so, nutshell, and we spent more time on this $30,000 slash $47,000 issue, but the thing is, we, we all agreed on 99.9% of everything in the budget, and we all agreed, I, I think unanimously, I think I can speak for everybody, that we needed to do something.
It's just the way you do it.
Yeah, along this line. We needed to look at, we need to look at compensation, and we need to look at our recruitment and retention problems that we have, and we all felt that that was one of the most important things moving forward as a city that we face. It's not building something, or improving a street or a road, it's keeping our people and making sure that they're properly compensated and rewarded for what they do. And it's, at budget session, just like Vice Mayor Epps, I was against this outside study. 100% for an inside study, I just felt like we could save this money, we could do it internally. And you know, as you, as you think, and as you sleep on things, and you think about it a lot, you know, we have a, my biggest issue, we have a recruitment-retention problem with our public safety officials. That's, that's job one in, in my mind, no offense to anyone, any other department. That's job one in my mind, and when you have a problem, you fix it. And if we had unlimited amount of time, I would probably continue to push to do this in-house, just everybody pitching in. I don't know, that's just, I guess, kind of my nature, and I know everybody's willing to do that. You gotta show it time after time. But by virtue of, we have a problem that needs to be fixed, and we have an outside source that does this on a day-to-day basis, they can come in, they can sit down, they can talk, they can get this done within a couple of months, therefore, we can fix this problem sooner rather than later. If something's wrong with your car, you don't wait till the next scheduled tune-up, do you? You take it on in, so.
Yeah.
That's my thinking. Also, like Councilman Anderson said, we would have to take, talking to City Manager Shipley, you know, they did this 25 years ago, that was, I mean, it's quite a while ago, and the time and effort it took you guys to do it then, we're quite a bit bigger now.
Right.
So I started kind of thinking, you know, long-term, you know, how long would this really take us, and how many man-hours would it take us, and how many other things we have going on? So I have changed my thought process on an outside firm doing it. Again, if we had unlimited time, it would be a different issue, but if you have a problem, you fix it, and, you know, I think that's, that's kind of where I'm at right now, so that's why I've changed my mind on voting for an outside firm to do it, but that's my two cents.
Well, let me just reiterate, reiterate that, again, that we, we really are on the same page, and I, and I, in my time that I've spent, you know, as a, as an official at the county and now at the city, I've, I've tried not to be obstructive, like a lot of politicos do. I am, I'm going to vote no, and not, not because I'm, again, I'm not against, against doing this, again, I, I still respectfully disagree that, with my council members, that this could be done, could be done in-house. However, realizing that I'm outnumbered 4-1, once, once we get this passed, you can count on Larry to be, to be, be a team player, be a team player, we're gonna see us implement it and get done, get done right.
I'm gonna say unanimously, we feel like we're ready to move forward regardless of how we do it, we're ready to move forward with the study, we're ready to make the changes we need to make, we're prepared to do it, we're ready to do it, and we want to do it, so it was just. So, it was just how you got there. That was our only discrepancy. So, with all that being said, anything else?
All right, all vote.
Sorry. I'm so used to pushing green. Want to re-vote? Got to re-vote, Kathy.
Re-vote, yeah. Four yes votes, one no, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Good jerk reaction.
You know, that might have been Freudian, Larry.
I set him up when I said we unanimously. Okay, this is the part of a meeting where we open the floor to citizens and/or delegates. Anybody wants to come forward, say anything they would like to, they want to lower their term on the planning commission, please come forward. Good, bad, or ugly. All right, anything from the council?
Well, I want to make just a quick comment, and Larry, I give you a hard time all the time, but one of the things that I do on a weekly basis is I write a letter to my children, and that's kind of archaic and old-fashioned, but I sit down and write them a letter and mail it to them, because everybody loves to get a piece of mail. And today, I wrote them a little letter about, we were going to vote on something, and I said, you know, we all are in agreement but have different ways of way we want to get this done. And I said, but in the end, the neat thing about this council is we will all vote, the majority will be, you know, put in place, and at the end, we'll walk away, and it'll be behind us. And this council has been such a great council to work with, and I appreciate that. So, in what you said, I unanimously agree with you. We're all on the same page, but may have difference of opinion now and then.
I'm never talking to Vice Mayor Epps again.
Well, nor is Kaye Starkweather, so...
All right. Anyone else? All right, be careful in the snow.